First of all, I'm Dr. Minister Member of Parliament for the line. And I want to thank you all for coming out to such a very, very important meeting. And this will give you an opportunity to learn a little about VAT. Now, I don't want you to hold back and don't ask the experts whatever question you may have. As simple as that question may appear, it's very important. And it's essential that not only you understand, but I would be listening also so that I can understand. I would also have to be put in my reading so that whenever it comes to parliament, I would be in a position to state our case and our position. I would be here for a meeting at a meeting, but I do want you to remain listen attentively to the presenters, the experts in the field, and by all means, ask all the questions possible. So that this can be a very lively, lively session tonight. We intend to have a series of sessions. At another session, we have an accountant who, you know, in the audience itself tonight, we have various accountants who are listening themselves. And therefore, they will hear the government's presentation and what the government is proposing. And they themselves, at another session, would be able to try and accommodate some of the questions of themselves within the house. And within the audience, they too will be answering the government questions so we can have some if we are proud of it. So again, I thank you very much for coming. And I'm certain that you will enjoy this lovely evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Introducing value-added tax. What is the nature of that VAT and the tax reform? What is the value-added tax? How the tax is designed? The various steps in the public education? And this is a part of that education exercise that we are engaging in. And then we want to look at the benefits of VAT. And I think both of you will attack us on that, but let's see whether there are some benefits. So that's pretty much the outline. I will do perhaps the first three bullet points of that. Ms. Peters will do the remaining four points, and then we'll do a wrap-up. Now, if you may want to interject any of your questions during the presentation, we could accommodate that. But if you want to hold toward the end, that would be fine as well. Let's listen. VAT as a consumer. The first thing, and what we want to bring home to you, because a lot of people have a really little misunderstanding about value-added tax. The first point that you would want to bear in mind is that everybody pays value-added tax as consumers. That's the first point. And that will apply to all of us on occasions when we return from shopping abroad in the same way that it does now. When you come back from shopping abroad, you have to make a declaration. And you declare your value of your purchases in the form of goods you deduct. If you still have any of your exemptions, $600 exemption remaining, you would do your deduction, and then you pay your duty on the remaining balance. That same regime will apply to VAT. There is no difference. So it's simple from that aspect, okay? And that applies to all consumers. Everybody will pay the value-added tax. It's payable first on entry into the country, same way as custom duties are paid right now. You will claim your allowance, and then you pay the net VAT at the end of it. Bear in mind, the government in the White Paper announced that there will be a reduction in the level of custom duties and excise duties. There are two regimes by which revenues are derived from customs and excise. Customs right now, custom duties hold some of the more marginal valued items. Excise regime has some of the more expensive items. But both those regimes will continue. But the idea is to rebalance the whole revenue regime so that you won't have high excise tax and custom duties together with the 15% value-added tax. There will be a rebalancing, okay? The major change in revenue collection will be for the first time, value-added tax will apply, or any tax will apply, in the domestic economy. And that's a big change. We're not accustomed to it here in apartments. We're accustomed to it wherever we travel, abroad. Whether you go to Miami, they say it's tax. You go to J.C. Penney, so you go to Home Depot, wherever. So it's no big new item. It is something that everybody knows about, and everybody lives with and deals with. If you shop abroad, you pay your sales tax. Value-added tax will be now imposed on all goods. And here's another change. It will extend generally with some exemptions to all services, okay? So that really is the scope of the VAT as far as it relates to the consumers. And in that respect, value-added tax applies to all of us. One little note, in terms of simplicity, there is no filing requirement that is required of you as a consumer, okay? No need to file with the government anything because as a consumer, you're the ultimate person that bears the responsibility for the payment of the tax, just as you do your custom duties now. So there will be no filing requirements to the government. Let's look at another category. Now, this is a very important category of persons in the VAT regime or stakeholders in the VAT regime. And it's important because I know all of us are consumers. Some of us are business persons. And it's to you especially that there will be a little bit more activity required under the VAT regime. We say the VAT and the registered business, what do we mean? The law, which will be promulgated, and right now, the law is with Cabinet. Hopefully, it will be released sometime September, October, when it goes to the House for consideration, and will be disseminated to the general public for comments and consultation. We're a little late in doing that, but it is there. It's been with Cabinet, I think, the past three weeks. I guess they're taking all their time to go over it. It will be released pretty shortly. But the legislation sets what is known as a threshold. And that threshold, it's the same kind of concept that you have in business license, where a threshold of a turnover or your total sales is established. In the case of value-added tax, we've selected a threshold of $100,000. In other words, any business that has a tax or has a revenue or turnover in excess of $100,000 is compelled to register with the value-added tax unit. Any business that has sales, turnover, revenue, whatever you want to call it, that's engaged in a commercial taxable activity. And we're not talking about the odd jumble sale that you may have in your home or selling your lawn mower, selling your car, or even selling your house because it will not apply to non-recurring individual transactions. You can sell all these things in the normal way you do now. We're talking about persons who are engaged in normal commercial activities, okay? If your sales exceed $100,000, you will be required to register with the VAT unit. And then there are certain responsibilities that will follow from there. First of all, you'll pay VAT in the same way that a consumer does on all of your imports. You will also pay VAT on all of your local purchases of goods and services. And then you will be required to charge VAT on your imports, on your sales invoice to your customers. Now, it is this category of business that only this category of business and only this category that will be allowed and will be permitted to charge value-added tax. And they will be identified by a certificate that they will be required to display. They will be required to report to the government on a monthly basis. That is a special category of businesses. Now, you must bear in mind that as far as the custom duty regime and the excise regime is concerned, there are about 26 segments right now where customs receives revenue at all of its ports, airports, and docks. This is a new concept here because now we're creating some 4,000 taxpayers who are now trustees on behalf of the government. They will be collecting the revenue of the government. That's what it is. If this tax, when this tax comes into the game on 1st of July 2014, from the 1st of July to the 31st of July, you will be collecting a business, will be selling in the normal way, and will be collecting revenue, price sales. And part of that sale will include the 15% value-added tax. You hold on to that. In fact, you like to hold on to it for 21 days after the month ends. And by that time, that 21-day period, you will be required to make a return to the government of your sales, of your in... of your sales, which will capture what is known as your output back, and of all of your purchases of goods and services that will capture your input back. The difference then you will pay to the government. And that is the system that is going to be operated. That's where most of the activity in terms of the interaction with the business community is concerned. Those 4,000 or so registrants are the only persons who will be required to make regular monthly filings to the VAT unit, okay? And then there is one further category. I mentioned those. What about those who are below $100,000? Well, they will not be allowed ordinarily to register as taxpayers with the VAT unit. Now, let me just make this very clear distinction because a lot of people get the issue confused and saying, "Why are these excluded from VAT?" They're not. They pay VAT in the same way as the consumer and as the registered business. They will pay their VAT in the same way. The only difference, they will not be allowed to charge VAT in their sales invoice. And so how would they recover their costs? Well, the same way they do right now in terms of recovering their cost in custom duties. They add it to their CIF value, mark it up, and they go on with their business. But they have no filing requirement, no registration requirement with the VAT unit in the Ministry of Finance. So they will not be able to charge VAT on their sales. They do not have any filing requirements, and they cannot issue a VAT invoice. They will not have a registration certificate. So for all of us as consumers, if somebody is charging you VAT, one of the first things you want to know and inquire about, do they have a certificate? In fact, I heard from the Controller of Customs and Mr. Anthony Striverton, the System Controller of Customs, who tells us that even the airport now or some of the docks, some people are saying that the government is charging VAT now. Tells you what kind of misunderstanding is being perpetrated and going on all around the community. Okay, so those are the broad categories. Your consumers, your registered business, and those that are unregistered, okay? Let's look now, and I want you to focus on this because here is where a lot of discussion and debate should arise, not only from this presentation, but ongoing. Every time a government releases its budget, you need to be involved. And you need to know how your money is being spent. And in fact, perhaps it's a good thing that VAT is being introduced because it would make us all a little bit more concerned and interested in what is happening to government revenue and how your tax dollars are being spent. You see, when we pay custom duties, that just disappears. You don't see it as a markup in the store, although it's already embedded in the price. The difference is with VAT, when you go to the retail store now, you will have the VAT exclusive price, and then you'll have a VAT. So you will see these two distinctions, what is distinctly your value-added tax charge as opposed to what regime we have now. But it is important for us to focus on why it is that we as a country, and I use that broad category, "we" as a country, because it doesn't matter who the government is. Right now, we have a progressive liberal party government. But this initiative was launched under the former government. And it was launched because of the state that the country is governing. And let's go and have a look at it. Here are some facts. And these facts are not private. I didn't steal them out of the Ministry of Finance. They are very public. You will find them in the budget of 2013, 2014. And in fact, just about every budget going backwards. Here are some very important points. The fiscal deficit. The fiscal deficit for the past seven years, that's going out to from 2007, 2008 to 2014, June 2014, I'm taking right up to the end of this budget period. We will have a recurrent deficit of $1.3 billion. Recurrent deficit, you know what I mean by that? We're paying salaries. We're paying operating expenses out of borrowed funds, okay? There in mind. That's recurrent expenditure. Look at capital expenditure for the last seven years. This is the net amount, $1.7 million in capital expenditure or the capital deficit, okay? And that's even after taking account of some of the revenues we've gotten from capital sales, like the same Telco. We'll see that a little later when we look at another slide. And importantly, in bullet point number three, the government debt up to the June 13, 2014, will have risen to $4.9 billion compared to $2.4 billion in July 2007. That's $2.5 billion, increase in seven years. And I'm laying this on you because I mean, we're all part of this stuff right now, okay? Let's look at it in some detail. And here is a fair, a very detailed analysis. And again, I will say to you that I'm not taking anything out of context. This is in the budget, so it's not in private. This is very public information. At the bottom, we say that this information is taken from the budget communication 2013, 2014. Let's look at it. Okay, let's look at this line. Here is where you see your deficits. There's our expenditure, projected expenditure for 2013, 2014. There is our revenue, gaping hole. That's been the case for all these years except this one. Huge deficits on recurring account, meaning we're not paying salaries out of our revenue. We're borrowing money as well to pay our salaries, okay? $1.3 billion in the red. There's the capital pool, I spoke about that. There's the big drop in the bucket from the Telco sales, we got $210 million. It did help us a little bit, moved the needle a little bit, but not to any great extent. A total capital deficit, $1.7 billion. A total deficit, $3 billion, less what we paid, $565 million. Total deficit of $2.5 billion in that seven-year period. Add that to what you brought forward, you'll have a bit of $4.9 billion in debt. Now, that does not include the, what you call contingent liability. The government guarantees all of the debt from the... Everybody looking so sad. You could tell I ain't no politician, eh? Because I ain't given no record vision or tried with no votes in.
Hello.
$4.9 billion, that's where we are. It's not a pretty picture. We need to hear it. We need to analyze it. We need to challenge our leaders with respect to how we deal with this issue. And so the issue arises, how can we get off this awful track? Now, as I said, it's not a matter of which government it was in power. The previous government did it, look here. There is where the last administration stopped. This was not as big up to there. Here, it's beginning to grow bigger and bigger. And the longer you go down that road, whatever. Yeah, it's a slippery slope. And plenty of our Caribbean countries are there already. Not on the slope, but down to the bottom. We're headed there unless we make a very drastic turn. Now, I mean, the discussion comes up, how do you make that turn? A lot of people say, "Cut government expenditure." Well, could you imagine taking $200 million off that? What impact that will have immediately? It will mean you either close a whole lot of schools and fire a lot of your teachers, close some of your hospitals and reduce some of your service. Can we do that? No. I'm sure you're getting a whole lot of responses from that. But those are the kinds of issues that will arise. Those are the kinds of issues that will arise in this discussion. The fact that we cannot go on in this situation where we are now. We cannot. And however you cut it up, whether we are going to cut government spending or increase revenue by taxation, because it's the same argument that's going on right now in the United States. The T-Po, Obama says introduce Obamacare and all the rest of it, welfare programs. We got to keep these things. These are some of the same issues that both administrations here in this country face the challenges. Okay, so that's why this initiative is being launched. Now, realistically, I don't think you can adopt any one approach. Perhaps both approaches, both dealing with revenue and expenditure over a period of time, has to be looked at very seriously in terms of getting this country on a very sound footing in terms of its economic stability and as an extension of that, social stability, okay? Let's move on. And so, I stole this out of the budget communication from 2010, 2011. I think when Mr. Ingram saw the magnitude of the problem then, at that time, this is not a new problem, okay? Not a new problem. 2010, 2011, we now in 2013, 2014, three years later. I have learned many profound lessons, made a number of keen observations, none more so than these. Leaders must fully assess the reality of the circumstances in which they find themselves and act accordingly. The economic circumstances in which our country finds itself cannot be ignored when planning for the future. Every crisis presents an opportunity for us to better, to be better than we are. And the leader who runs through today's difficult decisions only defers and doubles them to generations. That quotation is true then, and it went more resounding now, okay? Let's move on. A part of this whole process, as I said, right now, is concerning with expanding the revenue base. We know that there are leakages in just about every revenue stream that government has right now, whether it's in business license, real property tax, and in custom duties. So a part of the tax reform is to strengthen and improve those revenue bases, to plug up the loopholes and to see where we can effect greater compliance. All of that is being looked at. This is not, VAT is not being looked at in isolation. In fact, when the government launched the, what do you call it, amnesty program for real property tax, it was to encourage collections. Again, it did bring in some revenue. Secondly, to establish a tax structure that promotes economic efficiency. And then, you know that the government has been in negotiations for the last year or more on accession into the World Trade Organization. That process is ongoing. It's hoped to be concluded, I understand, by 2014, end of next year, by which time we will be compelled to reduce our custom duties down to some minimum level. And we cannot lose that huge gap of revenue without making it by something. So VAT is one of the considerations that has been used to try and plug that hole. Now, again, you know, no one is dismissing the debate whether we should be introducing VAT, or whether we should be introducing income tax, or whether you should be introducing corporate tax. I've been involved in the UK in administering all. I used to work in a tax department in the UK for many years back in the '70s. And I administered or was computing taxes for large corporations. There is no easy answer to these matters. So these are some of the issues that we're going to have to face. I'm just giving you this as a background. Perhaps this is more difficult medicine. Probably it's going to come a little later with some of the easier medicine for you as well as we deal with why VAT. Okay, let me try and conclude this so we can move on. VAT and tax reform. VAT, as I said, is not meant to be a duplicate tax in terms of just loading on tax on tax. So the hotel tax is going to be discontinued. There's a 10% occupancy tax, as we call it now. That is going to be replaced with the value-added tax. Hotels will now be paying instead of occupancy tax or guest tax, they will be paying a 10% VAT. But that will now, and here again, we're tiggering with all of our industry sectors, and we don't know yet the outcome. We're charging 10% on food and beverages. How to play that? Put that in your pipe and stop that.
What about the service?
I mean, 10% and 15%. 15% luxury, I mean, that doesn't... Okay, the question was whether the 10% VAT will be charged on the, what do you call it, on the gratuity. At this point, we understand, okay? A rebalancing of customs and excise. But this is a major consideration because if government is going to be reducing its custom duties to the tune of 15% to 18%, somewhere in that range, that is like taking on the table about $300 million. That's a lot of money that will be recouped and replaced. So you've got to look at these challenges and some of the risks that are being taken here. We're going to be absolutely... It's going to be absolutely required of us, I mean, we're fairly accurate in our estimations of this because they're going to be moving these tax. That's a part of the rebalancing exercise. The date for implementation is 1 July 2014. And a new agency is going to be established called the Central Revenue Agency for administering the value-added tax. VAT is all on tap for legislation. The 3% premium tax?
Yes.
There are some discussions going on about that. I don't know that there is any determination yet on that point. Bear in mind, a lot of the policy-making issues have not yet been resolved by Cabinet, okay? I mean, for instance, when I say policy-making issues like the 3% premium tax paid by insurance companies, whether that will continue to be paid or whether there'll be some offsetting with a VAT against that, we don't know. The same thing applies to whether the hotels, for instance, will only be paying 10% VAT on occupancy, food and beverage, or whether they should pay 15% just like the other restaurants in the domestic economy. Those are some of the... Are you saying this presentation is premature? No, I'm not saying that. I did not say that. Well, I, well, I know, I know the Ministry of Finance and I know the Cabinet, but I put it to you...
But also, if a bill has been tabled, how come it's been tabled when so many are known?
Pardon me?
The bill has already been tabled.
I didn't say the bill is tabled.
You said it was with Cabinet last three weeks.
It's been given?
That's not tabled. Tabled means going to the, going, going to the House.
When, when will the unknown, you know?
Well, I, I, I just gave you an outline of the fact that the bill is with Cabinet. It will be released for public consumption. Well, I mean, everybody's been saying that you haven't come to me with any details or any information at all. They're giving you some information that we have. Yes. That is, that is not true. Sorry, that is not true. Well, you listen rather than... I pick you up to wait and listen for the full presentation. Your company, your mind, you've already made up. And really, your agenda already is decided. Well, indeed. So, that means I am traumatized right now. Have a full state of all the answers. But we need to give you cumulatively as the stages unfold. You need to know what's happening, that's why I've come to you.
Well, good afternoon, and now Ishmael Lefdorf. And I'm glad he's a Bahamian and I'm not. So, there are questions about why is it being introduced? What is the state of the government in that city and all of that? He's the best person to answer that. I will deal with, um, giving you some basic understanding about how it works. He will have already mentioned how it affects the various stakeholders, the consumers, the registered business, et cetera. And I will go into a little bit of the theoretical issues above that so that when it is introduced, you would have a clear idea as to what should you expect when you go to a supermarket, when you go to shops, when you go away and come back with your goods, what you, what you should expect. Now, basically, VAT is a consumption tax. And as a consumption tax, every, um, time you purchase something for, to consume, whether it is a good or service, it is intended that the VAT will be levied on that. So, we talk about the VAT being, uh, levied on imports. Like I said, you go away, you bring back your, your goods, your groceries, your clothing, whatever it is. As you do right now under the customs duty system, you would declare what you would have brought in, get your allowances, and you pay VAT on the difference of value of the goods after you would have, you know, taken off your, your allowance. It is also going to be levied on the value added that businesses add when the goods and services go through the production and distribution chain. Now, in the Bahamas and maybe in many of the Caribbean countries, you may not have a long chain where you have an importer, a wholesaler, retailer, the final, the consumer. You may have a situation where the wholesaler is importer. So, there may not be a very long chain. But as the goods passes through the various hands, it will be attracting the value-added tax. And we say ultimately, it is borne by the final consumer. It is not a cost on businesses. Businesses are considered a trustee for the funds that they collect on behalf of the government. But you and I, as a consumer, I don't want to, going to be paying the VAT at the end of the day. In the business, you may be operating your own business and you may be a consumer also. You have your home to operate, your home to run, and you will be facing the charges of VAT. So, let's just look at the design, uh, some of the design features. Um, the VAT in the Bahamas is being introduced with the hope that we could improve on the administrative efficiency and increase compliance and ultimately increase revenue generation. We said earlier that the customs duties is going to be reduced so that despite a bit of, um, revenue that has been taken off the table and we have to bring in something that will compensate for that. So, there is going to be an element of revenue generation with the VAT. I don't think the government would be removing something from table, removing the hotel property tax tax, reducing the duties, and expecting just a forgiven or have revenue neutrality. There are certain considerations as it relates to the debt financing, narrowing the, the, the gap between revenue and expenditure. And so, with the introduction of VAT, it is hoped that some revenue, with additional revenue will be raised for the government to deal with some of its issues. Um, the standard rate that is proposed is fifteen percent. And that is common throughout the region. We have some countries that are seventeen percent. I think Singapore is seventeen percent. Barbados have increased recently to, I think, seventeen point five. But in the Bahamas, it is expected that it's going to be only fifteen percent. The hotel accommodation and food and beverages, um... The hotel accommodation and food and beverage is going to attract a ten percent. You'll have some zero rate. We heard that we do not have a lot of export. And when you look at the, the regions, the Caribbean regions do not, they're not an industrialized region. So, there isn't much exports. But according to VAT, um, according to the design that the government of the Bahamas is contemplating, there is going to be, for whatever export that happens, it's going to be a zero rate. So, that the goods that are exported from the Bahamas will be able to compete in a level playing field with other sources that have exported from other regions. There is going to be a group of exemptions. And it is proposed that some of the educational services, residential rent, those items, those services will be exempted. And we already mentioned, the whole design will be complemented by reduction in customs duties and expect that. Ishmael earlier spoke about registration and the threshold that has been contemplated is actually one hundred thousand. And it is going to be compulsory for businesses that get to that annual turnover. However, at the same time, there is going to be a system of voluntary registration. So, for example, if a business that is trading in any of the goods or services that is going to attract a subpoena on ten percent may not reach the one hundred thousand dollar threshold on an annual basis, but want to be a part of the VAT system, they can apply for voluntary registration. That application will be looked at by the Central Revenue Authority and a decision will be made with respect to whether that company, that business could be registered for VAT. But we must bear in mind that those companies applying for voluntary registration should be able to keep good records because that's one of the main features of a VAT system, the ability of the business to keep good accounting records and be able to report to the government on a monthly basis whatever is supposed to be reported. Now, we speak about monthly filing of returns. As a consumer, you and I do not have to file a return. It's not an income tax system where you have to sign on an annual basis declaring your income. You will just purchase as normal and that is the end of it for you and I. But for a business that is going to be registered, they will have to file a monthly return to the government indicating what is the net amount of VAT that they should pay. Um, there in the VAT system, there is, uh, as we said, it's no cost to the business because whatever VAT they pay, because everybody pays it. The business pays it, you and I pay it. But because the business is acting as a trustee for the government, they are going to claim the input VAT. Whatever VAT they would have paid on their inventory, their utilities, they will be able to claim that. And the VAT they would have collected from you and I, they will take, they will pass that on after they would have taken on what they would have paid. Now, when that happens, there may be a, there may be a situation where they would have more input than output. For example, a business that is, um, dealing heavily in goods, maybe around the Christmas time, Easter time, they have high inventories. So, they would have imported quite a bit of items. And when they filed it, but they would not be able to sell all of that in one month. So, what would happen is that the input VAT that they would have paid, the VAT they would have paid to customs may be in excess of what they would have collected from you and I. And so, a situation of excess credit will arise. And that will be allowed to roll forward for three months. It is hoped, and studies have shown in other islands where it has been introduced, that within a three months' time, it is possible that that excess credit would have been utilized fully. Because by the second month, when the business continued to sell, the output VAT that it would have collected may still be less than what the input VAT or the excess credit that was in there the month before. And so, that business would not have to pay anything to the government in that particular month. It that they will use that excess credit as much as they can use until there is some net amount to be paid. However, if the situation exists where the excess credit continues excessively, um, we may be in a situation where the business can now apply for a refund. And we all know, well, we, the studies have shown that refund system is a key detail of a VAT system. If the government is not able to pay the refund on a timely basis, the confidence that a business would have in the government or in the VAT system will be seriously compromised. And so, it is important that as the system is developed, that when the situation of a refund arises, that the money should be paid to the business on a, as promptly as possible. One feature that has been introduced with a refund system in a similar way where persons or businesses that style their monthly return, if they are late, there is going to be a system of interest. If the government is late with the payment of the refund, the government will have to pay interest. Oh, so there is some... You laugh at it, but, um, you have to make sure that there is some measure of equity in this system. If I'm going to charge you interest when you're late to pay to me, obviously, I need to be able to pay your interest way because this is money that I am holding on for you as a government. So, you need to be able, the government needs to be able to pay that interest. And in Reda where the VAT system has been introduced and that's where I'm from, we have the, the same system of interest only through funds. But we understand how, how, how difficult it may be for the government to have to pay the interest. So, what have we done? We've made sure that the system is set up in such a way that as an application for refund comes in and it is processed, it may be audited to verify any amounts being requested is, is correct. But there is a system in place whereby the refunds are paid promptly. No business, to my knowledge, has been paid an interest on refunds. And it is something that the CRA will have to look at to make sure that a system is going to be set so that no interest is paid. Prompt, prompt payment of interest of refunds in the same way that you expect prompt payment on a monthly basis of the net VAT payable. There is going to be a system of compliance and audit because that basically is a self-assess tax. The business would have to determine on a monthly basis how much you have collected, how much you have paid, you have paid when you acquired your goods and services, and to pay the difference to the government. The businesses would not be required to attach receipts and invoices of their sales or purchases to the returns that are going to be filed. You are, as businesses, it is a trustee relationship. I wonder why you laugh, uh, but I guess you know your, your environment and not your background. And so, I would defer to you on that. But VAT is not new, it's not a new tax system. It has been introduced in over one hundred and forty countries in the world. And in the very same manner that it has been proposed here where the business was collected on behalf of the government and paid over. The same happens everywhere else VAT is being introduced. But we talked about the compliance, the audit, the collections and recovery, and the penalties. Because it is a trustee relationship and you're expected to pay over on a monthly basis promptly what is due to the government, if that does not happen, the system of compliance checks, the system of penalties would step in. And so, businesses are going to be told what is expected of them in terms of how do you prepare to file on a monthly basis? How do you keep your records in the manner that you can easily extract the information and submit to the government on a monthly basis? So that you do not have to face any of the penalties or compliance checks that is normally a part of the system. But it's important that those things are there so that it serves as a deterrent to businesses that may want to keep the money and do not pass it over. Only businesses that may want to underreport their sales. Um, the collections and recovery system, yes. We said that the business would have to file their returns and pay by the twenty first of the following month. You would have collected the money from the first of the month to the third year or the first of the month. But you have twenty-one days within which to be able to hand it over to the government if there is an amount to be paid. And as such, if you don't do that, the penalty systems will kick in.
We all know that during the year, people have one year to pay their property taxes and their taxes. And we all know that no one pays taxes on time and time of year. Do you really believe that Americans are going to hold their accounts on a monthly basis and pay in three weeks?
It is not what I believe, but it's what, what to be done. And as, as a, as a result of what has been introduced and to prepare businesses to be able to do that, the government is engaged in this public education system. Normally, for consumers, but for businesses, to hold their hands, take them through the process of what needs to be done. It may be a new, it's a cultural shock for what happens. I understand what you're saying. And this has been set for the implementation. And you may think that the public education may be a bit COA coming out or it's not as wide reaching as it ought to be. And that may be so. And part of the reason that that is maybe so is because some of the policy issues, as Ishmael said before, have not been finalized. But in the meantime, if you're to pay him, no sir, if you're to pay him for forward to the world, once you understand the policy issues, then it's just a matter of applying it. The education process is going to be continuous. You said before, we're going to be holding your hands. It is not a matter of introducing it now, educating you up to the point of implementation and you don't see the members of the CRA after that. It is going to be a continuous relationship. As I said, a compliance visit, audits will be done to make sure that businesses comply. Government has to make it, um, easy for businesses to comply with this tax. It is a new system. It is a new system that requires the business to keep records, be able to account on a monthly basis. Like you say, you don't pay your property tax on a monthly basis. You pay it on an annual basis. And even the business that has property tax have been due on an annual basis. So, here it is, something is being introduced where on a monthly basis, you will be required to file something to the government. It may be a cultural shock. It may be something that none of the businesses can...
We cannot afford accountants to be doing this for us every month. I'm a one-man company. I, I take a day out of my month.
We'll take note of that question because we have an answer for that particular one. Yeah, uh, note that question, you'll get back to it. Um, VAT documentation. Like I said, it may be a cultural shock because you say that you don't keep good records. We have been going around, um, at few places, making those presentations. And what we've heard is that the business don't keep good records. But VAT is a system that... But that is a system that depends on paper trade, record keeping, and being able to report properly. So, as a registered person, somebody who will be in the VAT system, who will be legally obligated to charge VAT to the consumer and report it, will have to issue VAT invoices to other registered persons. And those VAT invoices should indicate the items that have been acquired and the specific amount of VAT that is paid. We don't have that right now. You may get a receipt, and the customs duties, you don't know what amount is in there as the recovery for the customs duties. But for VAT, because it's a transparent system, you will be able to see how much VAT you would have paid on the particular good or services. The same happens for an unregistered business or a regular consumer like you and I. We will be getting sales receipt in this instance that will show the amount of VAT paid. The prices, it is expected that prices on the shelves will be quoted as VAT exclusive. Why is that so? The duties are gonna be reduced. It is expected that the business would pass on the benefit of the reduction in the duties. However, if it is allowed in the system, it's put in place where VAT-inclusive prices is put on the shelf. You will not know whether, if this tin of milk, where the duties may have been reduced by maybe fifty percent, if that being passed on to you, you would not be able to tell. But if you, if you see on the shelf the VAT-exclusive price of the reduction in the duties. Yeah? And that is all to show the transparency of the VAT system. So, I saw your hand up, but the moderator said we take questions at the end of? All right, let's just quickly look at this table. And we wanted to show you this so that you get a sense of how the VAT would work for both the consumers, the registered business, and the government in terms of how much a consumer may be required to pay on the VAT system versus what was charged pre-VAT, as well as what sort of revenues government will be able to take in through that system. Currently, in the system that we, that we operate right now, let's assume that an item is imported for one hundred dollars. The duty is on it, forty dollars. The landed cost becomes one forty. In currency, there is no VAT, so nothing is charged.